The next is our budget discussion. No action is requested from the board. I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you Chair Franz, Board of Directors, and I'm on the seat if one of our members of the team can get that pulled up there. Hopefully it'll get controlled from this remote up here. We had it going earlier before we had to restart, so. So as we get ready to have this presentation and discussion with the board, I just want to preface a few things. I know that as a result of the levy not passing, we are facing a very different financial reality. And I want to be very clear with the board, as well as with our community, that the types of discussions and decisions that we're going to have to make, by no means is this retaliatory for our communities taking a position on how they would or would not support the levy. I've seen some emails coming in asserting some of that, and I just want to really set the record straight with our community. We appreciate the democratic process of our voters going to the polls, and our community has spoken. And we respect that decision, and we are going to move forward appropriately in spite of that decision being no. We're going to have to make some different decisions right now. And we've been saying that all the way throughout that levy campaign. So this shouldn't be anything new for our community, or coming out of left field as to why we're doing this. I think we're very clear from day one as to the rights that our families and community had to vote yes or to vote no. And if we voted yes, what we would have to do, and if we voted no, what we would have to do. So we're at this point, and I will also share that making reductions in the neighborhood of $4 to $5 million is not going to be an easy reduction. Given the fact that we've made some significant reductions to date, we don't have a lot of excess that's in our current budget. Certainly, there are some things that we can address that would be more low-hanging fruit, if you will. But a majority of the conversations that we're going to have are going to be very impactful. And as I've stated, we will strive to do our best to ensure that the reductions that we make are as far away from the classroom as we possibly can. But I also want to be very real with our community. We're not going to make $4 to $5 million reductions without having any impacts. It's going to be felt. But again, we will now have to try to mitigate, whether it's something impactful to the classroom or impactful to our staff, et cetera. It's going to be felt. And we are committed to upholding the integrity of everyone involved. And we know that these are going to be tough decisions, and there's going to be a lot of emotion behind a lot of these conversations and decisions. There's no good decision. And you've heard me say that we're choosing between what's good for students and what's good for students, and that's a real tough place to be. And again, there are probably some things that we can address that are going to be easier than some others. But nonetheless, this is something that, as an administrative team, we have been working through for many, many months, because we've had some of these conversations all throughout the levy campaign. And we'll eventually get to a slide that talks about the fact that these were the types of conversations that we were going to have to have. This wasn't an exhaustive list that we published during the campaign. And so there are going to be some things that are on that list, and then there are going to be some things that are not on that list, and everything in between. We are committed to being open to having conversations. We're not reserving any sacredness about any one particular program, because as this community can probably imagine, we are being petitioned by many throughout our community for the thing that that family, or that student, or that community member loves. We understand you have to make reductions, but not that, right? And so the "not that" times the thousands that exist out there, we would eventually not cut anything if that were the case, right? But we're not in that space. And so we are going to be making reductions that some in our community are going to say, "Why would you make that reduction?" And unfortunately, it's because we have to make some of these reductions. Because if everything was set as to "not that", we wouldn't be making any reductions, and that's not going to fix our issue. So that is something that we're committed to doing as well. We've been having a lot of conversations internally and externally throughout the process. And as you can suspect, there's a lot of chatter that's happening out there. Whether it's information that we've shared, whether it's speculations that individual staff, or students, or people in our community are having, and that then gets taken as the gospel that this was going to occur. And there's just a lot of that happening. We'll do our best to try to, you know, control that chatter mill and that rumor mill. It's not going to go away. So I just encourage our community to stay abreast to the conversations that we'll be having here at various board sessions, as well as regularly trying to post through our budget website the types of kind of directional supports that we get along the way. And just as a reminder, the final budget that we will bring to the board will be in June. But there will be some checkpoints along the way that we are just kind of seeking directional support to say, "Yes, Michael and team, this makes sense. Continue to plan accordingly." Or, "You know what? This is something that we would like you to revisit, or we would like you to consider exploring this area instead." So those are some of those iterative processes. And I've shared with our community on a couple of email responses, and I think I shared this in my Fridays Five last week with staff, is that when we're having conversations about a variety of different topics of reductions, some of those reductions, some of those conversations will advance as recommendations to the board that the board would take under consideration. Some of those will never see the light of day. But we are committed to having a conversation. And a conversation, and the root of that is combat, which is to solve or to change together. And that's something that we're committed to trying to do, to have those conversations, so that we're kind of doing a 360 in understanding, you know, the true impacts. Sometimes it looks very obvious, but then there might be some second and third order effects that we just have not foreseen. Or through further conversation with the board, with our staff, with our community, we learn some things to say, "Hey, that actually is going to be more costly, or that actually really makes sense, so let's go forward with that." So just want to set that context with our community as we move forward. Let's see if this works now. All right. And in some of these slides, the board and our community has seen, but we're trying to do kind of a cyclical approach, kind of revisit a few things, and then introduce new concepts as well, kind of like some of our curriculum. So we've been utilizing our fund balance for bringing additional revenue streams, because our enrollment has been declining or flat at best for many years. And so trying to find ways to address some of those financial shortfalls and stay competitive in terms of what we've been offering for many, many years has been a pattern in our district. And this is a pattern that we intend to change as we move forward, because we really need to shore this up to find ways to bring greater structural balance to the budget. Just as past, or for this current school year that we are in, we've made about $3.2 million in reductions and brought about $957,000 from fund balance to bring a balanced budget for this current school year. And again, it's the reductions that we made this year are several. So in kind of broad categories, and I won't read it all, but we've made about 2 and 1/4 in administrative reductions to include actual administrators, as well as administrative costs. So that's what we, that went into that 3.2 reduction. When we look at some of our instructional aspect, we've reduced some of our sections, as well as a variety of some of our specialists throughout the district. We've also reduced other core sections based upon our enrollment. And so looking at our class sizes, et cetera, so we've managed to that and allowed that to kind of organically manage itself, kind of like natural attrition. And so we've capitalized on that. We've reduced our MinCaps coordinator position and merged administrative roles at the secondary level, as well as through natural attrition of a retirement. We did not backfill one of our middle school positions as well. So we've had some cost containments and reductions in administrative costs this year in that area. Some of that instructional support. We've eliminated some of our teachers on special assignment. Many of these teachers are teachers who are going to be facilitating that professional development aspect of improving the craft of many of their colleagues throughout the district. Some of that has been reduced. So we're compromising the quality of educational training and support to many of our teachers throughout the district this year. Our testing facilitators, we've reassigned some of those duties and added that to the plates of some other staff. This also has been an ongoing pattern that we've just continued to add to other positions versus truly stopping certain functions. And that might be something that we're going to have to consider, because as we continue to fill the plate, we are burning staff. And they're just saying, "I can't manage the level of load" that's coming with some of the functions. Our pre-ACT and some miscellaneous software titles that we've already reduced from this year. So again, some of the emails that we've been getting, some of those cuts have been realized this year already. And then we'll continue to look for additional as we move forward. And then lastly, we've made some reductions in our custodial staff to just a little over 130,000. So about $3.29 million in a variety of cuts were realized this year. And just to reiterate, you know, where the board approved some of these cuts were the ones that I just mentioned about some of the two administrative positions, as well as how we've combined and merged other FTE to save overall administration costs and administrative overhead. We also added about 85 increased fees to generate about $85,000 in revenue for this current school year as well. Now, as we move forward, this is a slide that many in our community have seen over and over again. This is not exhaustive, and these are the types of conversations that we've committed to saying that we are going to have. Again, forecasting the fact that we're going to have to cut $4 to $5 million is not a small nickel-and-dime exercise. These are deep impactful reviews that we're going to have to consider to get that size of reduction in an already fairly lean budget. And I'll just remind folks that we are striving to build a reduction around the $5 million, giving ourselves about a $1 million buffer. That might be a little excessive, but we'd rather plan conservatively so that if, for unforeseen reasons, we have to make additional reductions, we won't be doing that at the 11th hour. So we, if we could scale back and not have to move forward, that would be a better thing for us to be able to do. So we're building in some of that buffer. But again, to reach that $4 million mark at the low end, that's a very impactful number that we're going to have to try to find, $4 million. And so some of these items here are things that we have begun already moving forward. Our last conversation with you all a few weeks ago was unless we were told otherwise, we were going to continue down this path to be costing a lot of this out. Now, there will be some immediate reductions that we would be recommending. There will be some midterm reductions that we'll be recommending. And there will be some longer-term reductions that we're also going to have to have discussions about. Some of that immediate aspect are going to be the things that we know, as we shared a couple of weeks ago, are going to be predicated on forecasting enrollment based upon the amount of sections that we will be able to offer. So some of the conversations that we had earlier tonight about elective opportunities, we know that we're going to have to find ways to scale some of those electives differently based upon historical enrollment, and maybe some of those electives will not be able to be offered moving forward. So we've looked at that, because knowing that our registration at the secondary level begins, I believe, around January 13th. So this is why we're asking, you know, this board to consider moving forward with some directional guidance on that so that we can go ready to print our registration manuals and not have a messy registration process and having to undo things after the fact that students have already chosen. So we'd rather scale it back and, versus having folks registered and then reworking everyone's registration, and then you got them, the mental fatigue of students to say, "Well, why didn't you just wait, you know, and before you made us get our hopes up?" And so we want to make sure that we mitigate that and address those, our realignments and reductions now in ahead of registration. And then again, the longer term would be some of the conversations around sales of buildings or building closures, et cetera. It's going to take some time by MDE rule, as well as just thorough engagement. So that's longer-term conversations that we've got ample time. So our focus conversation tonight, I'll be talking about a variety of different things, but I'll narrow in on the more immediate conversation that I would like our board to consider. And the plan at this point is then to come back in about a week for that directional support to say, "Given what we've shared with you, your time to reflect and ask questions, so that we can be ready to open our registration in a very efficient way and with the reductions already kind of started, that we know we had some latitude to address." So the first couple here are going to be around that immediate frame. And so right now, we are looking at ways that we can address the element, or the staffing ratios and discussion caps, and increasing that discussion cap and targets by two. And again, allowing the natural tide of enrollment, based upon where we've been, ebb and flow to kind of naturally rise. Some areas will rise, while others might still remain flat. It all depends on how that enrollment is dispersed or distributed throughout the district. But that gives us some latitude to address how we could manage enrollment and find cost savings there. Also, our middle school and high school cap on minimum class sizes, a discussion that we just had a few minutes ago. So as we look at some of our courses and some of the enrollment that's currently there, and what we may project on where student enrollment may go in terms of choice, we have the ability to save resources there and allow for a restricted class set of offerings for our kids based upon where we anticipate our enrollment will be. And with some of those class-sized caps, if we're below that, or I'm sorry, class-sized minimums, if we're below that, those are the types of things that we would look at, potentially pulling offline or delaying based upon that enrollment. We are also looking at the space within special education and the caseload ratio similar to our class-sized targets. We have caseload targets as well. And based upon the needs of our students, as well as our minutes of service and demand for support that our students have, we've analyzed that to determine that we have some error, or some room margin there so that we can address ways that we can find cost savings within special education, but still honoring the due process and meeting the needs of the IEPs of all of our students. And still remain very competitive compared to where some of our neighboring ratios are at, significantly higher than we currently are, and where we would even allow kind of some level of growth to occur. With special education, because it's a space that is kind of an unknown, and we are seeing significant surges all throughout the state of Minnesota around special ed, this is something that we'll closely watch, always has been. But again, Michelle and her team are working diligently to watch and monitor those numbers there. We also have the same with regards to some of our para caseload increases, where we have still the ability to have that one-to-one support as necessary, as well as the para prorated support based upon the needs of our students all throughout our special education caseloads throughout the district. So that is another area where we are able to find some cost containments there by adjusting some of those thresholds. The other conversation that we are continually working towards is moving MinCaps from the Lakeville area back to the high school proper. There's a variety of different spaces in the high school that we are looking at. And again, it would make sense in a couple of different ways, but we will work with the administration there to find the best fit for where we would locate that program. We have lease aid that is a lease levy that's paying for a lot of our lease aid. But there are some aspects of that lease that is not reimbursable by the levy. And so our property taxes, some of the maintenance fees, et cetera, custodial costs, those are all built in there to the tune of about 145 unreimbursable from that lease levy. So we would be able to find cost savings there. And then we're also running a shuttle for students who would need it, and we would no longer need to run that shuttle between the high school and MinCaps. So we build a, identify some of that transportation savings there. And then based upon the enrollment, as we talked about with some of the other secondary conversations, based upon enrollment, we would continually review any of the staffing adjustments that may or may not need to be made, as well as have conversations with our staff to say, "Okay, is this pathway a high enough demand that we can justify the cost of offering all the pathways? Or is that something that we're also going to have to evaluate?" So again, we start registration for MinCaps, I believe, later on this week. And we'll just continue to watch that enrollment aspect. Keep in mind that Farmington, as a partner, is also going through the same type of significant budget reductions that we are going through. And I know that Jason and his team are going to be engaging in a very parallel conversation with their board. But part of their campaign conversations to their community were if it isn't successful in passing, that the likelihood of sponsoring tuition to MinCaps is not very likely. But again, those decisions would have to be made at the local Farmington level. We are planning for our own registration, and then pending what happens with Farmington. If a Farmington student would still like to continue, perhaps maybe they're going to be a senior next year, they really want to find, complete that, that would be a decision that that family would have to make to potentially open enroll completely as a PLSAS student. And then the family could continue to bring them to our district, and we would continually happily serve them as a PLSAS open-enrolled student to finish out that MinCaps pathway. And I know those are conversations that the team is having right now with some of our out-of-district families. An area that we are reviewing right now, specifically around the return on investment, and is this the best model of instructional support for students? Is our Laker online? And right now, as we're able to assess the performance of how our students are doing, this is an area that we highly question whether or not this is the appropriate way to meet the needs of our students. We know that there's a demand to be online, but we want to make sure that as we're meeting that demand, that there's actually learning progressions occurring in predictable ways that we would like to see for our students. And we're just not realizing that with our current Laker Online model. And so that is an area that we believe that we could have some different conversations with our families, knowing that they're there for a specific reason and leaving maybe that traditional comprehensive high school approach and that brick-and-mortar approach. But would it be worth exploring, for example, some of the ALC opportunities for our students as well? So those are some of the conversations that we're going to have to have to ensure that our students are actually engaged effectively and excelling academically, even in the midst of some of the challenges that maybe some of our students are facing, who are electing these different non-traditional models of instruction, that we still want to ensure that they are being successful. So that is an area that we anticipate that we could find some savings by restructuring how we would support those students. And then the caveat that I have here, excuse me. Again, this is not something that was quote-unquote "on the list", but just I want the board to take under consideration as we forecast the testing cut scores and where we've lowered some of that to generate enough enrollment in our Sage program so that we could have a plausible class. With some of the adjustments to the targets and discussion caps, there would be unintended consequence, and this is a good example. And so I wanted to bring this forward just more for open conversation, that this section would likely fall pretty low in terms of the potential enrollment. And so the question is, is that something that we would be able to continue? Is it something that we should be able to continue? Is that where we would want to put resources? Or would we potentially save resources there because of the enrollment as we look at that cap adjustment as well? So again, like you, we would consider high school electives or courses. If the demand isn't there, if the enrollment isn't there, is that something that we need to take under consideration? And so we also know that this is a very, you know, prized type of experience for kids. And this is where it gets challenging, because the types of conversations that we're having isn't to necessarily, you know, highly recommend that we eliminate third-grade Sage, but we wanted to be open with the board and with our community that as a result of some of these other conversations that we're having, we anticipate this would be a fairly small cohort. And so just want to put that on the table for some consideration. I think we have time to explore this. This isn't one that would be in that immediate, but it is one of those areas that I put an asterisk there for you all to just have a placeholder there. That might be something that we're going to have to take a look at, okay? We also have some opportunities around some of our technology that we feel would be something that we could take on and make some of those recommendations for more immediate reductions. And that would be around our iPads in elementary. And then looking at our staff desktop computer savings. And then lastly, when we look at Qualtrics. Qualtrics is the infrastructure behind our public-facing finance dashboard. It's a very costly contract. And so we are looking at multiple external contracts that we have to find out if that is an area that we would be able to find some cost savings. So between Qualtrics, as well as EduClimber, which is kind of like our student data warehouse on a variety of performance measures for our kids, they total just around $50,000 for us as a district. But we are, that is an area that we would look to explore reducing and perhaps merging under a larger umbrella policy, if you will, with another IT solutions partner that would be able to give us some significantly discounted rates because we have multiple programs versus five different consultant, IT consultant providers, maybe just one. And we can work to scale and have better agreements in contracts. You know, and again, the question would be also, do we replace the finance dashboard? This is something that I think our community has really grown to appreciate. It's something that a lot of folks in our community do access. And it certainly is something that, you know, with Qualtrics, we could just turn off. Or we find other solutions that we could offer that, and perhaps it's not as robust as it is. Maybe at the skinny that back, again, something that we would have to explore. But we wanted to just put those two as examples. And we're looking at some other titles as well. For example, our talent ed and some other aspects that we currently have IT solutions for. We know that some parent providers, if we do an umbrella approach, would probably be able to get us a much more competitive rate compared to what we are paying with a proprietary program through an individual provider. We anticipate right now with our QComp. We did a QComp presentation every year with the board. And if you recall, we have some of our QComp in investment and professional development for our staff and developing our staff to be highly effective and talented. But we are also spending more than what we get reimbursed by our QComp grant. And so what you see here is pulling that back to what's only reimbursable to the QComp grant. And so we have a potential savings there. And then with the calendar conversation that we just had with you all, we have those two less days built into the calendar. And you can see a couple of different cost savings there as a result of having two full days versus these partial days that were reduced. And so we do realize, I think to Vice Chair Bullion's question, it's a both and. Here's the financial aspect, as well as what we shared in terms of being responsive to our parent feedback and the board feedback to find ways to be less disruptive. And so you see that before you hear the CD as well. And then lastly, is one aspect, is the pool at Twin Oaks. And we do have quite a sizable investment to do some significant maintenance and upkeep to that pool in the very near future, tolling over $1 million. And that is something that if we keep the pool open, that ultimately, you know, from a safety standpoint and facilities use standpoint, we would have to address. And so not moving forward that right now and pulling that pool offline would allow us to at least delay, shift some of that LTFM to some other key projects that are pressing right now. And again, I want to be very open that we know that this is a very- And again, I want to be very open that we know that this is a very heavily used space and, and really respect the partnerships that we've had with a variety of folks in our community, excuse me, to be able to facilitate a lot of activity and supports for our students in swimming lessons, as well as swimming sports, et cetera. And this is, this is a challenge for us. These are those tough decisions where we're choosing kind of what's good and what's good. There's value in this, and we also have some significant financial realities that we don't know if it's smart for us to really consider at this point. And so that may be something that we would easily be able to move forward with for next fall, but definitely would be open for longer-term conversations and continue to explore that based upon some of the conversation that you heard earlier this evening through public comment as well. So, so those would be the examples, namely, the class size targets, the elective restrictions, some of the sped caseload aspects, and some of the TOSA components of QComp and other things of that nature that we anticipate as an administrative team that we think would be very plausible for us to consider for next fall. And I would say for our registration purposes, namely, the class size targets and discussion caps and elective options, those are things that we definitely need to make sure that we readdress in a very timely manner, because we go live, like I said, with registration manuals on January 13th, I believe. And so waiting until January, which I think would actually fall on that date, would be literally the day of registration beginning, and then we're making decisions, you know, at the 11th hour and pulling the rug under, you know, while registration is occurring. So we would definitely like to have you all consider those as initial conversations that we would move forward with as we continue to plan for our January registration and that initial reduction mode. And then come January, we would be starting to move more into some of the midterm conversations with the board, and that would be the new board at that point, around some of the other cost containment areas. There are, you know, right now, we're looking, well, let me just go into a couple, let me just go into a couple of them. So that's all that we would have some, this is all that we would have some conversation with the board about for next week. The next series of slides, these are conversations that are more of that midterm and long term, and I just want to keep the board abreast, as well as our community abreast, on the types of conversations that we're having, that when people are saying, well, what does that midterm look like, Michael? We want to give just some examples of some of that as well. So again, we have some time to work through this as we move more into that budget planning, you know, kind of the heart of budget planning. Right now, we're going through our organizational chart and analyzing for efficiencies. Are there various positions all throughout the district that we can look at differently so that we can address the needs of students and staff, but find ways that we can make additional reductions? We, we know that some of these reductions would also be assessing what's happening here at the central office, too, but that means lack of support that would continually go forward, you know, with our school sites as well. So there's, there's, there's paybacks for, for that as well. But again, those are some of the things that we're currently assessing right now. Facility changes and looking at usage fees, again, going back to can we generate some moderate amount of revenue based upon fees? And I know this might seem kind of nickel-ing and diming, but folks, when we're trying to find four million, everything is open, you know, 10,000 here and 10,000 there and 10,000 there is $30,000. So we, we need to look at various ways that we might be able to offset some of that revenue, and that might come by way of some of those usage fees. Other conversations that have been part of our campaign to date is the conversation around our Spanish immersion. We know that as kids at the elementary are in Spanish immersion, it's highly desirable, and there's a, there's been a push to really have a more robust K-12 experience, particularly at the middle and high school. And we have been building towards that over the years, and we've had our share of hiccups and bumps along the road, but nonetheless, we've demonstrated some level of commitment. And then the question is, you know, can we truly afford, you know, the K-12 experience for Spanish immersion at this time, or do we focus our efforts around the elementary component and then move the secondary more into your language elective options and offer higher level of electives, because kids are coming out more prepared to speak at higher levels, specifically with Spanish? I would say a parallel conversation to this that some of our, our secondary staff administration are having is, we could say the same with other world languages such as German and French, who have seen, you know, very small numbers over the years comparatively to a Spanish. And is that something that we need to look at as well? Again, these are just exploratory, open conversations that want to be very real with our board and our community. These are what we mean when we're looking at every stone and every leaf, not to say that this will all come to fruition. And trust me, you've seen the campaign that I've seen from our community about their passion and love for the, the immersion program, and I, and I don't doubt that. I don't question the impact that it's having for some of our students. But again, I think this is a conversation that we have some time to be able to have and explore. We're not saying that it has to happen by January. And then middle school activities that we discussed, I think a couple of weeks ago with the board already, I won't reiterate that, and shifting some of that to community education. And then other potential reductions that we have some time to kind of begin to explore. Field trips as a large umbrella has been a big conversation that we've been having. And as you heard tonight, Wolf Ridge is an example of an experiential learning slash field trip. I mean, it's categorized on a variety of different fronts. We're not specifically advocating that that be the thing that gets reduced, because also what we do know is that some programs in our district are sponsored through grant funding or categorical funding, so we could reduce it all day long, and it doesn't do anything to our bottom line. And so those are some of the conversations that we are having about like, you know, the history museum, ski trips, you know, science museum, et cetera. Are those the types of things that we need to start scaling back and saving bus costs? Because what we're finding with our bus contract is field trips are excessively high, and that's where we're racking up a lot of unanticipated expenses, because the extracurricular routes have gone up significantly. Again, relooking at those early release days, we do know that that would come with some statute challenges, particularly where Read Act goes or doesn't go, but again, it's a conversation that we're having. Band lessons, walking distance, district-wide transportation contract, routes, vendor, you know, et cetera. There's a variety of things that we are having conversations about and exploring. And again, we're not wedded to these, but these are the things that we must cost out and try to understand and explore, so that when we are coming back to the board with some recommendations, we've done our due diligence to really kind of look at every nook and cranny that we can to address ways that we can find some midterm reductions. And then lastly, as we've talked about some of those longer terms, and these are things that would likely be around that 26, 27 school year, is around some building closures, building sales, et cetera. But we've got ample time to have that discussion, but just want to put that on, on the radar of our community and of our board, and then that's kind of like that iterative process of that immediate midterm and long term, so people have a better understanding of the types of things that would fall under such categories. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Chair France, and our administrative team stands ready for questions and conversation.
The only thing that I had, I remember we had asked of this, is the impacts and considerations be applied consistently across, you know, the negative impacts and all that, so we understand what's being lost, because some of these things are still pretty high level. And I know that some of the questions and concerns that have already been brought up by other board members would do touch on that, so.
And we've put some of those that we could identify fairly confidently in, in this, in this conversation.
Okay. I think there's a few that we've talked about that aren't here that would probably need to be in writing, but anyways, I'm going to open it up to the board for questions. And remember, these are discovery and exploratory questions, we're not making decisions tonight.
I'll start with a question. Last year in February is when we signed the resolution for the reduction of programs and/or staff. So, and that is what resulted in our first, your first, you know, couple of slides of this presentation, where we did reduce teaching sections and, and made the decisions that we made, starting in February. So why, can you help me understand why a large majority of these reductions need to be made in one week, versus giving us some time to really evaluate, like Chair France said, what are the ongoing costs, what are, you know, the tails that go with the program?
That's kind of not, I just wanted it all consistently. I think we've already talked about why some of the immediate decisions need to be made, but I want to add.
I guess I'm not clear from what was stated, because we're doing something that is totally different than what we've done in the past. So I'm trying to understand that. It's something that I've been asked by the community, so if you could share.
Yeah, I'll just.
And I think I would really like to know, going into next week, Wednesday's meeting, what from this, very specifically, will we be asked to approve?
Thank you, Director Atkinson. So the, the pieces for us that are really pertinent for us to move forward with registration is, excuse me, is our class size targets and elective, our elective schedules and offerings. That's the thing that we really need, that directional, excuse me, that directional support from the board as we get ready to go into print, because we want to make sure that we're printing the appropriate registration guide and not having things in there that will ultimately be cut. And then having kids register, and then we're going to say, oh, by the way, sorry, we're going to unreg you from that, because we're cutting that now. So we wanted to make those determinations. We felt that was the best student-friendly approach to address that. Everything else, I think we've got time, as we go into budget kind of development proper, to be able to have those discussions as we go forward. But as I stated earlier tonight, as I started the conversation, the, the big pieces are around that registration component, namely, class size targets and discussion caps and electives. Those are the things that we want to get buttoned up, so that we can launch a, a, a better kind of efficient registration process.
So just to clarify, the Spanish immersion, though, would be considered an elective? Is that correct?
The Spanish immersion is not considered an elective. It's actually a, an academic program pathway that may or may not be impacted based upon the discussion caps and enrollment. And so that would be something that we would have discussions with, just like any other course.
And, and the Spanish immersion, is that immediate?
It, it, it all depends. I mean, if, yeah, so, so again, the, the Spanish immersion, I think we've got some time to have some conversation about that. I think what will drive that conversation is going to be more tied back to the registration process and to see where that demand lies.
Can I just add a point of clarification at the middle school level specifically? As we look at that particular slide where we talk about the FTE reduction at the middle school specifically, as we look at class size, there is not the variation in, we spoke about this, or I spoke about this at the board meeting back in October, when we are looking at class size. There's greater variation at the high school level because of the range of courses. That variation does not exist to the same extent at the middle school level. So if we are looking to more efficiently staff, one of the conversations that I've been involved with the middle school administrative team is to look at, and Principal Kowalski has been engaged in this for some time now, because this was a topic of conversation pending the outcome of the referendum, and looking at courses or looking at middle school schedules, six-period day schedules in neighboring districts. And we continue to have a, a much more robust elective offering sequence of courses. And that is uncommon, some, quite, quite uncommon, among our neighboring districts with six-period days. In most cases, they are offering a very prescriptive, you receive exposure to elective offerings, a wheel, we call it, in sixth grade, and then you continue to have a prescriptive continuation of those wheel courses, one in seventh or in eighth. So concrete example, currently, we offer art for all students. I'm just naming that for, to illustrate a point. Then we offer in seventh and eighth grade, students' choice. They can choose to continue and take multiple courses in art in seventh and eighth grade, or choose a different path. What's most common and most efficient in terms of staffing is to actually prescribe that you either get an additional art course in seventh grade or one in eighth grade. And then tech ed, for example, similarly, get, everybody gets it in sixth grade, and then you either get one in seventh or in eighth. That's the most efficient way to schedule, and that's how we would potentially realize the FTE reduction. So that is something that we would ultimately need to make decision around, so that our registration guide reflects that, different than our registration guide reflected this year's list of courses. So that's a distinction that I wanted to make sure is clearly understood, that we are looking for in the time for registration process. And also, there is, with regard to the world language or the Spanish immersion experience, there are some additional courses that currently our requirements call for our students to get specifically a online experience, so that they can maintain the, the world language Spanish, as well as their social studies requirement in sixth grade. The wheel of required includes an online health elective or health course that they must take online. And in eighth grade, it includes a additional quarter course in physical education. The middle school would consider changing that potentially in order to meet this criteria of three FTE. If they do not do that, it would potentially not result in the same amount of savings in FTE. So I just wanted to, I know that's a lot of further detail, but paint the picture for what we are looking at potentially at the middle school. And then the high school, it's about all of those electives that we were talking about earlier tonight, streamlining, and again, that variation. In ninth and 10th grade courses, the schedule is fairly relatively set for students, and we have greater, higher class sizes in those, but as we start to get into the junior and senior courses, we have that increased variation that results in the increased number of courses that are significantly lower, and we're going to have to tighten that up with this eight FTE.
So can I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, thanks for illustrating that for us. That explains the situation really well.
That's what I was going to say, is the trickle-down effect. Once we decide on the FTE, then there's things that have to happen right after that, that then go into an immediate course selection that will be corresponding with our first board meeting in January, so we don't have time in January to make that decision. We need to give the direction now. But I understand that, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I want to make this clear, in that immediate, in our slides and what was talked about in the study session, is these immediate discussion points of those FTE, as well as a couple of the other immediate ones with regards to classes, as well as the sped ratios, that has to be done, the sped ratios, too, have to be done as soon as possible with the paras?
No.
They do not?
No.
Okay. Okay, that's what I, well, so I was wondering, because that's class sizes with paras, too. Okay.
We still have time, we have time on that. The immediacy is the registration process.
Okay.
At the secondary level, most specifically. And then at the elementary level, also, we'll be looking at the adjustment of class sizes as student enrollment comes in. At the kindergarten level, registration has begun.
Correct?
Yeah.
So just to clarify, it's really just this one slide that we're looking at? And the other, the thing that I can, thank you for the additional information that makes sense. The thing that I was looking at was where it says, including potential reduction Spanish immersion. So I guess my question is, is wouldn't this happen after the, how do you say, after you see what type of level of interest you have in these courses? I mean, I understand, I understand from our teaching and learning committee as well, the, the explanation of this wheel of. the, the explanation of this wheel of offerings, I, I get that. Um, but again, wouldn't all of the, these decisions sort of have to be made based on student interest?
Yeah, the registration would drive specifically the, uh, Spanish immersion, for example. Or in the high school case, the Mincaps pathways. That would be registration-driven. And then it would, we would determine, uh, what the reductions in those particular areas would, would, would be able to be made. And if they aren't able to be made there, they're going to be made elsewhere in our, uh, course selections. And that, that tightening of, um, sections that I was referring to earlier.
That makes sense, thank you.
Director Atkinson, as members of the board, if I can add, for clarification, these are our estimates that we are projecting that we'll be able to reduce. Um, as we go through this iterative process that Dr. Thomas has explained, we'll, we'll have a better number of how many FTEs actually result in as we get towards the February, March timeframe. Um, but this is us looking at current enrollments, current interest, seeing what we, we are projecting this would be. So, to your point, we will know more about this in February and March, and the actual specifics of what the reductions would look like.
To that end, pardon me, uh, on that slide, when we talk elementary. So, how do we know then, because registration hasn't happened yet? How do we, how do we get to these numbers, the six and the four specifically? I know you, I know you have to make some, um, maybe assumptions isn't the right word, but how do you get to these numbers when we don't know yet?
Director Olstead, members of the board, um, we make assumptions by rolling our enrollments and then doing an average of our kindergartens, and then increasing the discussion caps and targets by two, and then going through the exercise of what we would have for sections if those numbers were to be true, um, and make, make those as assumptions. Again, those numbers change all throughout the year, um, and throughout the summer. And we do still plan to have the, um, to request in the budgeting process to set aside a, a signed fund balance so that we can make those adjustments as the summer goes. Um, because elementary specifically is the, very difficult because those numbers change quite frequently, and that's why we watch it every week throughout the summer. But this is based off of, uh, assumption of our current enrollment rolling up a year and making, uh, an assumption for kindergarten.
Thank you.
I, did you make a question?
I do have a question. My question is, on this, um, slide, the staffing model changes slide. The elementary is listed as, um, increasing the class targets discussion cap by two. Um, we're talking about the import, what, what you're looking for, immediate direction to be on class size targets. Is that just in the elementary school? Because I don't see, um, class size, oh, middle school cap on minimum. Okay, so for the elementary, you said increasing by two. Middle school, did you have like a number? You know, I'm just curious, because you gave an example for elementary, increasing by two. What are we looking at for middle and high school? And the reason why I'm asking is because, um, it is my assumption, please correct me if I'm wrong, that, um, class sizes are maybe more important at the elementary. Smaller class sizes may be seen as more important at the elementary level than middle and high. Again, that is my assumption, it might not be correct, if you can speak to that.
I, I think first of all, I, I'll, um, speak to the, what I'll call complexity of the secondary, to boil it down to a number. And I think I, we tried to articulate that back in October when we were talking about class size. You can look at it in courses that all students take. For example, English nine, just pick that out. And when you have all of your students that have to take that course, and you can be efficient, you can be most efficient, um, with that because you have a number of sections to distribute them to. Um, when you start to get into courses that have just a few sections of it, it becomes not as efficient of an exercise. So the range, um, is great. And if you recall, I think, I, I'm, I'm not going to possibly accurately reflect the October presentation, but I think the range was in the low twenties to high thirties, um, when we talked about those other courses. And, uh, so boiling it down to a number, yes, I think twenty-five to thirty-four with outliers is what we had communicated, thank you, Director Herman showing me that presentation. Um, but we had also content areas that were different. So we had social studies and science looking different, uh, and English looking different. So, um, boiling it down to a number that we have as a class size target and discussion cap at a grade level becomes a much more complicated exercise.
Thank you, I appreciate, and, and you're helping jog my memory. I do remember that conversation. Um, is it, is it fair to say, or, or, um, that this would be the recommendation based on, okay?
Director Bullion, if I may add, um, to your first question in, in that series, I, the, the staffing model is pretty similar across all districts where the lower grade levels have the lower class sizes. And then you, the, as you go through the grades, there, they increase. But an increase to all of our classes, no matter if it's elementary, middle, or high school, will be felt. Um, and the high school courses, to the complexity of it, some of them have smaller sizes because of the course and the curriculum, or the lab, or something like that. So I do want to put it out there that, um, I think increasing caps, uh, class sizes in all of the levels have, has a very similar felt impact. Um, yes, the, the ratios may be a little bit different based off the grade level, but increasing class sizes, um, no matter what level, um, does have, does have an impact and is felt by our staff.
Um, one of the questions that I had with this, and, and first of all, I do remember the conversation where we did the average class sizes by core class instead of all electives, because obviously, for the same reason that Director Herman just stated. But historically, and also given the demographics of our staff, we tend to have a fairly top-heavy, um, staff as far as, um, experience years or tenure staff. When we've increased class sizes, uh, we tend to see early retirements. We tend to see additional substitute costs, also, because of the stress level. It's, it's hard enough to grade papers for twenty-five kids, add two more on to that, that's another forty-five minutes a night, and that they do on their own. And that, that obviously has trickle-down effects. Are we considering the costs also of potential additional substitute teachers? More sick days than normal? And, and, um, attrition based upon early retirement that could raise costs in other areas like recruiting? Have we put in a buffer percentage for that in our estimates?
Chair France, members of the board, um, in terms of our attrition cost, that has been pretty cost-neutral over the years because we no longer are hiring staff at step one, step two. Um, we have a lot of our, our positions, our hard-to-place positions, where we are seeing more experienced staff members come into the system. Um, in terms of our recruitment costs, that was a budgetary cut last year, so we don't have a great deal of recruitment cost, um, in our budget to date. And, and we don't, we haven't had a time study done on how much it costs us to onboard a staff member completed. And I apologize by, if I missed your second question. Sub-cost. In terms of our sub-costs, um, we, we have seen an increase in our fill rate that has increased, um, in our overall cost. But in terms of any sort of analysis that's been done on, on increases of sub-costs based off of class sizes, I'm, I'm not aware of any study that has been done to, to make those, or to predict those costs.
I have more, but, well, it's kind of a question, kind of a comment. I see two things here. I see a conversation about the, the class discussion cap at elementary. That's one item. And I see a second item of course offerings and staffing efficiencies at our secondary level. Personally, I see those two items. I, like Director Atkinson, have a pretty recent memory of last February. Like, we've gone through this. I personally don't see a world where we cannot adjust our staffing models, mostly based upon a slide that Director Frederickson, Frederickson sent over earlier, that ninety-eight million dollars this year was staff salaries and benefits, sixteen million in purchase services, and then supplies are three point four, and capital expenditure is three point six. We are going to have to touch that ninety-eight million dollar bucket somehow. And so, I trust that getting a registration packet out that is going to be inaccurate, and students register and parents sit next to their children and go through it all, and then we yank all that, could be extremely frustrating to our community. So we either run it that way, and go, oh, gosh, we knew that was going to happen, but we did it anyways. Or we're really diligent now, and we say, well, what is that staffing model going to look like in those course offerings, and we're going to have to stick to that. So that's my opinion. I see that there's just not a way to kind of kick this can down the road. And if those are the conversations that we need to decide on by next Wednesday, the eighteenth, I mean, I personally am like, I see it now. I don't, I don't want to go down the Spanish immersion path if we don't have to. But I'd like to look at what is efficient, especially because if I look at the eighteenth, nineteen, twenty, then you have two holidays in there, and you have really short weeks. And if we're going to expect our staff to really work hard and get this right by the fourteenth, we should probably give you the time to do that. That's just my opinion.
Is, is there, um, I don't even know if I want to ask this question. I mean, what are the implications of delaying registration? Is that a possibility, or is it not? Does it cause too big of a trickle-down effect?
Chair Crosby, members of the board, um, I, I would exercise caution around that. We have made, um, great efforts to move up our staffing process to better align with surrounding districts. In the past, it's been more heavily focused on the recruiting side of things to make sure that we are able to recruit with all, um, with all the other districts at the similar time. I would, um, be very cautious this year around if we're impacting the number of staff that we're predicting we are. We delay that decision even, even further, and then they miss out on the, especially the largest districts openings, and then don't have the opportunity to apply. If we were able to provide them that notice, um, in a more timely manner, that could significantly help them. So any delays in this process delays our ability to inform our staff that are impacted one way or another. Um, it also helps, um, our system come to an ease when we have those decisions made, and there are people who are no longer living in a limbo situation. From a staffing perspective and an employee morale perspective, I would just, um, exercise caution in, uh, in doing any further delays on that.
Thank you.
I have a question. In the past, I don't know where I got this report from, but it's a pre-K to twelve per people reporting, um, report. And it goes all the way back to two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Gives the average daily membership of students, um, total government funds, the cost per people. But then it also gives how many, how much teaching staff we have, the number of teaching staff, and it gives the pupil-to-teacher ratio. And I think it'd be really helpful, I mean, we're really only missing one year on here, to really see, um, the difference between like, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we had, you know, eighty-six hundred, it's about the same as what we have now currently. And we were at four hundred and seventy-three teaching staff with a ratio of eighteen point two. I think it'd be really helpful for our conversation next week to know what those numbers are, so that we can have more of like a holistic look at, how does that compare to where we were back in two thousand seventeen, eighteen? Or even some of the historical numbers here as well. So I don't know if you know those numbers off the top of your head. If not, I, I wouldn't assume you do, so thank you. But if you could, anyway, pull that, or even just, I can get you a copy of this report. I think it's something you gave, gave to us in the past, so.
Director Atkinson, members of the board, I would have to take a, well, first of all, thank you for the compliment. No, I don't have that on top of my head. I would have to see that report to know what you're referring to. Um, and then as we've discussed a couple of different times with the school board, I just exercise, I would recommend exercising caution comparing to two thousand seventeen. Um, at a ADM specific level, um, our, our EL numbers are different, our special education numbers are different. The mandates that we're supporting in our classroom are, are different. But I'm hap, if it's the will of the board to update that report, I'm happy to look at it to determine where it came from, to see if that's information that we have available.
Yeah, I haven't seen that report. But, um, I know that we've seen similar stuff, but you're right, those staffing numbers have changed and, um, quite significantly over the years because almost every other year, we've discussed a, um, average staff ratio. Now, there's a lot of reports out there like NICH and stuff like that, that go on survey that aren't correct. Uh, and we have had a reduction. My question, um, I'm not so interested in where we were in two thousand seventeen, given the changes in the environment. But my question is more or less, um, understanding the net impact to educational outcomes, so that we're clear. We may not have a choice, but at least we go in with open eyes of understanding that impact of increasing, particularly elementary and middle school core classes. Uh, and with the extra emphasis on the elementary. Because as we're trying to improve what we saw last month on the, whatever that thing is, World Blessed Workforce, whatever it's called, CAC or whatever, I would see that has a direct impact on those educational outcomes by increasing any class size. And we may not have a choice, but I'd like to go in with open eyes.
Chair France, I'll just, yeah, um, that, that is something that we shared at our last, um, study session as a unintended consequence of, uh, managing class sizes differently. And that is, as you increase your class sizes, the management of a classroom gets more challenging. And also, if we are engaging in like that second term or midterm conversation around some of the supports, um, around deans or social workers or counselors, and trying to keep classrooms whole, then the supports are also restricted. So yes, um, you're right. The unintended consequence for adjusting class size ratios is classroom management and the ability to have the one-to-one relationships. And if I don't have that ability, uh, or if that's more compromised, then we would see a, a correlation between the engagement of students, the education of students, et cetera. So we can't predict exactly what that would look like, but you're absolutely right. That's, that's a natural byproduct of higher class sizes. Excuse me.
Um, I just had to add, this report is a district, it was a district-made report. It was in one of our budget documents. And, and just in addition to what you said, Dr. Thomas, I think what we really all need to keep on top of our mind is our new strategic plan. And how do these cuts, no matter what cuts we make in the next year, how do these cuts, um, align with our strategic plan? Whether it's academic excellence and giving each student their unique learning needs and goals, meeting those unique learning goals, and also positive learning environments. And like you said, Dr. Thomas, if you increase class size, what is that going to look like as far as, um, where staff are valued and, um, students are engaged in learning? And so, um, I think that this conversation next week, this, the whole strategic plan has to be top of mind. And whether ever, whether we move forward with this, or whether we push back and say, no, we're gonna, we're gonna look at something different, so. I know there's other districts in the state who've said, we're not touching student, we're not touching teachers. We're pushing back and asking for administrative, um, cuts. And so I think that, you know, I'm looking forward to that conversation. But I think our strat plan has to be something that we keep on top of mind through all these conversations.
I just know, a while back during the audit, I think our administrative costs, which we categorize different, we've had that conversation too, what counts as administrative, but I think we're at like three point four million. Even if you wiped out all administration completely, you're still not going to get there, which would be absolutely impossible, right? Like, no corporations run without administrative. So I think you just have to be careful if you really want to look at the numbers and the truth, right? Corporate America can try to increase revenues. We can't. We, we're told that, we figure that out in November. So the reality is, we can try to be kind to our staff and let them have proper time to go look for new positions if need be. We can be really honest with our community, that our classes, no one wants small, big class sizes. We, no, it's just, but it, the numbers are there, the math is there. They're, they're, they're not, it's not the thirty thousand dollars here and there for... for some sort of little technology item that helps things run more efficiently. We knew this was coming, we saw it, there's no surprises. This conversation has been going on for quite a while. And I don't think we're being fair to pretend like there's going to be some miraculous. And I think I said this at the study session, so I, I'm not going to continue to go on and on. But we know that, we knew this was coming this way, and you have to be realistic about it. And I sat through this strat plan as well. I enjoyed all of the hopes and aspirations. And I loved when, when our student rep said that she would have taken AP Chem if she could. That's academic excellence, I understand it. But when class sizes and staffing ratios have to be adjusted, that's just the reality, so.
I think to clarify, Director Billink, there's seven point million dollars worth of staff just in the DSC building alone.
We've already had this discussion multiple times.
Seven point two million.
And, and, no, that's.
It's right here.
We're not even going to go there.
Happy to have posted online for anybody to see. Fifty-four FTE.
Seven million. No, so let's, I would like to understand the confluence of a couple of things. And I mentioned this before, and I understand that paras are not part of this. But when we increase class sizes, and we do have an increase in, in kids needing IUPs and SPEDs plans, and you increase class sizes, we also, some, I mean, I walked through all the elementary schools now in the past month, and almost all of them had supports in the classroom. And increased number of supports than they've had previously. So when we do this, are we going to have to increase those supports? And will that increase costs in other places? And that's why I'm trying to understand that whole interaction. We can increase class sizes, we're gonna have, no matter what, a hit on educational outcomes. But we also have an increase in an influx of those IUP plans. So help me understand how we're going to buffer that? Or is, are we taking this just one variable at a time in order to have a control factor?
Yeah, so there's just some unknowns. I think logically, we can say, yes, by increasing classes, it increases the complexities of management and everything that we just talked about a few minutes ago. Is it a true one-to-one correlation that we're going to have higher referral rates, et cetera? We can't say that for a fact. We have supports in our classrooms. That was one area that we made some critical investments in as we were coming out of COVID a couple of years ago. And those investments are there to help support kids in that tier one, tier two. Will we have others who continue to rise to higher levels of support? Yeah, that's going to happen. And right now, we would have to monitor that to see what, you know, similar to what we were just talking about with the calendar. Until we actually have this as our reality, we're going to speculate what the, the impact will be. We, I think we can use our logic to say, this is what's going to happen. And now let's see if it actually plays out. And if we have to shift resources, et cetera, then those are the things that we're going to have to engage in based upon the realities that come with various classes.
I mean, I, I, obviously, like, I'm just a seventeen-year-old high school student.
Not just.
But, thank you. I would like to say, when I was in elementary school, obviously, a lot of things changed. Obviously, there's more people being diagnosed, there's more, there's more helpful people trying to help us out. When I was in elementary school, I was one of thirty-one and in my classroom. And yes, I think there was definitely, there was definitely a lot of chaos. And with COVID, there's probably a lot of behavioral issues that might come out of that. But it didn't seem like it was as big of a problem as a lot of people are maybe speculating it to be if something, we're going, not even near thirty-one per class again. And I agree with Dr. Thomas where it's kind of like, we have to, no matter what, we're going to have to make those risks, no matter what, we're going to have to make changes, no matter what, we're going to have to make cuts. And with such big revenue with this example, it's kind of something that has to be noticed, that has to be acknowledged, and that has to have a chance of being played out, whether we like it or not. And we knew that, we all know that some, somebody's going to be mad, something's going to happen, and no matter what direction. Like, that was my coach up there, and I know everybody from state, three of the girls on the state team for swimming, you're state champion, we all started at Twin Oaks. So if that happens, that's going to crush a lot of us, we know that. But with something like this, it's such a greater outcome with, I feel like, only ifs and possibilities of consequences, where we should look deeper into it.
I have a couple more questions, but I've spoken already, so I'll defer in case of anybody else.
Director Franz. I think I got my head mostly wrapped around what you're, what you're getting at with this, with this slide. But I think that if I can get philosophical for a minute, that, that, we're going to zero it in on this page and what's happening in the next few weeks and months. But, and I know we've talked a little about, a little bit about this, Dr. Thomas. I'm, I find myself really concerned, not about this year, even next year. I think public education is on the verge of a complete structural change. And if you think that the state's going to come and rescue us anytime soon with their budget forecast, well, you're, you're wrong. Will we be able to get a levy passed? Maybe, I mean, probably eventually. Will that change long-term, the things we're trying to do? Or will we find ourselves right back in here six, seven, eight, nine, ten years from now? And my encouragement is to, for administration, you know, we're going to have to do what we're going to have to do. And class sizes are going to have to go up, more than likely. I was on a board where we had forty-one kids in sixth grade. And you think you're getting emails now, that was phone calls back then. And, you know, you'll, you'll get through it if it's temporary. My concern is that, is the next decade. What, the things you want to do with your, with your area superintendents regarding the kinds of things the state are telling us to do, those things don't get taken care of. This conversation is going to be happening every single year for the next decade and on. So we can nitpick around here and say that we should cut here and there. That's not the problem. It's a problem today, but it's not the problem, you know, for the next several, several years. And, I don't know, that, that's just popping in my head now. And I, I, for us to try to, you know, go through all the possible scenarios about two more kids here or three more kids there, the bigger class sizes are going to be a bigger pain for the majority of the teachers, depending on the kind of class that they have. Some teachers will manage it better than others, some will get, frankly, will get lucky with a good group of kids. I mean, it's just a, just a, there's all kinds of things that can, and we can't control that. All we can control is the budget for now. But again, my, my bigger concern is, is moving forward because this, this is just the tip of the iceberg of what we're going to be facing.
Director White, I think your points are very well taken from some of our one-on-one conversation. And, and, and yes, we do have this immediate technical thing right before us. We, we have to make these decisions. The math is real, so we know we're going to have to make these adjustments. And, and so it's the both and of the local conversation, plus then, where do we then advocate legislatively? Because as you and I discussed, we are at that implosion point. We're not the only ones here. And multiple districts are in this space and for the foreseeable future as well. So, you know, there's a deep structural challenge, that's more of a legislative conversation. So that has to occur. And I know that, you know, this will be something that the new board will engage in around the legislative platform. And I know that we just had the delegates' assembly a week or two ago, and a couple of our groups are kind of landing, so we're going to solidify ours locally here, which is not going to be much different than where we've been because nothing seems, we can't advance the ball legislatively. So I will say, this is a big push for our community locally here to also push your, not these local electeds, but our other local electives, electeds who are at the legislature making key decisions around the value proposition of public education. So, so that is another invite that I have for our community and our staff that, yes, we, we will get pushed to do our jobs here at, at, at the board, throughout the administrative ranks, et cetera. And we need that advocacy going above this conversation.
Director White, I want to thank you for elevating the conversation. I think our board needs that, especially as I look at this and, and see the thorough work that our leadership team has done and our administrators and staff across the district have done on this. I don't see, I mean, certainly, we can push back and have deeper conversations. Frankly, I feel like that's a conversation as the year progresses with the new board. We know we're going to have to have increased class sizes, we don't like it. I don't, I don't like any of these things. I think it's administration's job to move forward on these things. And I've seen our administration take furlough. I've seen our principal cover multiple buildings, you know. I mean, trying, trying to do enormous amounts of work. So I don't, I, I think we're, from a leadership perspective and an administration perspective around decision-making, I, I think you're on the right track, and I think that's your job. And for us as a board, it's about advocacy, and it's maybe about vision too and looking for opportunities. So this isn't a place for me to throw out what that looks like right now. But as an example, you can, MinCaps is a really strong program. Just because it moves to the high school doesn't mean kids won't open and roll for those opportunities. So maybe there's a vision there to create revenue that way. So it's not all lost and all negative and all bad. It's opportunity to change and be better and, and really showcase what we have. I know there's a district, a neighboring, neighboring district to us that, are they neighboring? I'm not sure they're neighboring, who, who has really shifted their model for online learning and increased their enrollment, huge in online learning. I'm not, I don't think that's us. I'm saying that that's a model that they've tried to take an opportunity and, and create revenue, you know. And so those are the conversations I'd like, the, I'm rolling off the board, right? I'm done. But those are the conversations I think that are exciting when we talk about fundamental change. And in terms of increasing class size, yeah, we're going to have to do it. And I think having a meeting next week or not, you know, what, it's going to have to happen. This board isn't going to probably change that because we're talking five million dollars in one year and then five the next, you know. So, so thank you for elevating that conversation.
So just, I guess, I mean, the discussion's not over, that's fine. But then moving forward for the next nine days, do we go home and mull it over? I mean, how, how, I mean, what's, what's the will of the board here? How do we?
That's a good question.
How do we, that's my only little bit of confusion with this process. We have this nine-day window. Do I schedule meetings with all of you and get your feedback? Do I, you know, schedule time with Dr. Thomas and all of the directors? And, I mean, what's, I'm trying to figure out what's the best way to move forward so that I make the right decision in nine days?
What they've asked us to do in the study session is basically to give direction and also to solidify this information. But I agree with everyone, we are going to increase class sizes. My concern, and what I saw this before, and I remember the no cap on open enrollment and all that leading up to the building operations levy where classes were exploding, but for a different reason. The problem is, is that there was hidden costs. And so what I want to be really clear on is when we look at these ongoing savings, and we've seen this happen before, is we're doing a statistical number of we increased the cap by two, therefore, we decrease FTE automatically by this much. And it seems like it's all just cut and dry, it's a simple, you know, arithmetic. I'm seeing more of an algebraic conversation here that there's hidden costs in here that we have been hit by before. And I'd like to know that, as I believe, Dr. Thomas, you brought up, is we, we have a little over four million that we absolutely have to cut, being conservative and make sure we're going for that five million because I believe that there will be hidden costs. And, and we're going to be in a situation where, like we have been before, where all of a sudden something comes up and we're adjusting the budget and taking more money out of a fund balance that is quickly whittling down. So I just want to make sure that all the variables have been included in here and that we are truly being conservative with these savings numbers as we go on because this is just step one in the process. We still have a lot more to cut. And personally, I don't like the numbers being thrown out that have been said that weren't true. But I also don't like the fact of when I go into an elementary or middle school, I see nobody sitting around and doing nothing. Matter of fact, the amount of work which just sharing facilities people during a time where, I think, just in the time that I was in one elementary, they had three kids puke. And we had one facilities person that was also being shared between two different buildings. We couldn't get to that fast enough. And then you're dealing with other issues and parents complaining and all that. And we're dealing with the health and safety of kids. So if we're going to go ahead and start to make even deeper cuts on top of this, we can't change that, but we have to be really clear on the consequences and, and understand the risk that we are, through no fault of our own now, taking. And that's, that's the only thing that, that concerns me.
And I, and I would agree with that. It's just I want to make sure that if, if this is the direction we decide to go in nine days, that when those ancillary unexpected costs that may show up as a result of us doing this, that then we don't double-whammy these people. I think that extra, because we're, we're about three point nine right now of the stuff that had numbers to it. So that leaves it at one point one, that can't, that can't come from here. I mean, it has to come from somewhere else, whether it's administration or, you know, program cuts, whatever it is. If we're going to hit them now, they need to be confident that when those other surprises come, we're not going to hit them again. At least with this round.
And, and by the way, with the MinCaps and all that, here's my concern is we, and I have no problem with moving it to the high school and eliminating the transportation costs. But the reconfiguration of a wing to put MinCaps in, the cost and the certification that occurred for the healthcare pathway, if we're not going to offer it, we need to know that right away. Then there's the issue where, in our neighboring districts that have the pathways, they do have more pathways. And, and do we have the ability, what, what will be our future plan and what will we be giving up? You know, that sort of thing. So there are some concerns here that I, that I know need to be, need to be discussed. But if the only, and I want to make this clear, if the only thing administration needs to know is if we're good with this one slide in order to start the process, and that's all you need for registration, and you're confident that these are the numbers, and there's not going to be any hidden fees, like you said, and like I think are in, because I've been doing this long enough to know that there's, oh, my gosh, we didn't think of this two or three months later, and now this has to happen. I just want to make sure that we're buffering it enough so that I'd rather have good news than bad news. For whatever good news there can be.
Chair Franz and board directors, and I think that's the approach that we're trying to take as well, which is why we're having open conversations just about on every topic that we can think of and kind of vet out, you know, the what ifs and those second, third-order effects. And, and I would agree that we project and we make forecasts based upon what we anticipate. And then when it plays out, you're not going to cover one hundred percent of every little detail. Something's going to pop up as a, oh, yeah, didn't think about that. Or, yeah, that was a little bit more costly than we anticipated for whatever reason. And so we find other ways to make reductions because, you know, we've, as a team, we've worked through a variety of these scenarios. As Director White just noted, we're just at around four million dollars with everything that I walked through tonight. You know, minus building closures and reassumment. Like, that's a whole separate, you know, charge of savings for successive years. But we've got the bandwidth that we've built in to hit that four million dollar range on a variety of things. Now, again, we also don't believe every single thing is going to make it through. So, you know, if we're going to trade something off, then where else are we going to find it? Because it's a zero-sum game, we have to find that target. We have to find that target range. So, um, you know, I'm confident that where we need to go in the, in the discussions that we've had with building-level administration on this particular slide, which is like our big crux right now to, to launch in a very healthy way, we're very confident about this, um, in terms of where we anticipate. And we might even, I mean, could go a little bit differently, but, you know, right now, we're, we're playing this one safe, you know? Because we think we have the bandwidth here. So, that's the one aspect. Again, some of these other aspects, we're exploring that. And we're gonna have to work through some of those second and third order effects to say, yeah, this does make sense or not as much sense. Or if we're gonna do this, you know, the buildups. I mean, Dan Powers and his team have been looking at a variety of things on, on where we could relocate and, you know, if we're going to be closing a school, like, what are all those things that we're gonna have to put money into something to kind of remake the space, et cetera? Not completely, um, building from scratch, but there'll be some reworking of things. But I will tell you, Dan and his team are talking about, well, we'll find ways that we, as a team, are doing this. We're not gonna commission this out or contract this out. So, this is some of the builds that we can save on external consulting labor or construction labor where we can actually do the work ourselves. So, that's another thing that they're looking at, um, when it comes to actual space. And, and so, so I, I say all I have to say, Board, um, there's a long way to go in this budget development process and, and budget reduction process, um, both the, the intermediate as well as longer-term conversations. These ones here to, to launch effectively, um, I don't think we could do much different than what we're sharing with you on this particular slide, um, to be competent to open up registration without pulling the rug underneath our kids and our families.
I have a question, Dr. Thomas. With, um, loss of enrollment, I mean, 40 students to date, probably 100 by the end of the year, that's what we've done in the last three years, declining enrollment, wouldn't that in and of itself lower class sizes? I mean, we've seen that in the past, and that's where we've seen some of the money that we have additional revenue or, or different additional funding. So, go ahead.
So, 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 yes, there would be natural attrition that we can forecast, and that's built into some of the mo- staffing models that we've built into. And those are the assumptions that we're rolling in as we kind of cascade this thing out. So, we're taking that into account, um, and, and not relying that we're gonna gain another 100 kids, you know? Will we? That'd be great if we did, you know?
So, I mean, it's just not, it's maybe as doom as gloom, doom and gloom as we, we may think it will be. I agree, um, you know, again, what are the, the additional costs? So, I, I think the most important thing is, like I said, tying it back to our strategic plan. And, and if it impacts any of these things in a negative way, then we're not serving our community and what we heard from our community in developing this new strategic plan.
I, I would, I would say, I hear you, and executing with fidelity doesn't come for free. And, and, and so, as we've talked about other districts who have different revenue sources and levy resources, et cetera, um, that, that's the challenge. And I wanna make sure that, you know, we don't find ourselves weaponizing the strategic plan in ways that we're gutting the very resources that we need to deliver with fidelity. And, and that's a fine balance to do. So, I hear you, and I would just add that caveat, um, to, to, to kind of bring some balance to that. But I hear you.
But also, if we decrease revenue, which this year, we're, we, we projected and we're over our projections, which is a good thing. So, we still have the same projections. But when revenue, I mean, when enrollment decreases, revenue increases proportionally for the most part, except for, you know, obviously, the variation in the formula. And, and so, um, we're, we're still, we're just, we're still treading water, if not dropping below it, no matter what. I mean, it all kind of balances out.
So, Chair Franz, it, it, again, it's going to depend on a lot of the assumptions that are made. We have built in some assumptions. There are things that are beyond our control. That's why we do financial updates every month to keep track of where we're sitting and if we need to make some adjustments. We've done a five-year forecast, and everybody's seen those assumptions that we've made. I don't, haven't changed those assumptions unless there's something that would lead me to believe that those assumptions are gonna be inaccurate, and I haven't seen that yet. But again, that's why we monitor it every month to just make sure that we're still on track for what we anticipate.
Well, what I'm saying is that a decrease in enrollment doesn't save us all this money. And we don't, I mean, just like this year, we, we had our enrollment and it was, we were projecting it to be less. And every di- district that I know of is projecting it to go down, uh, in the next five to 10 years, um, that they can see. But decrease in enrollment decreases revenue.
Correct.
Increase in enrollment gives us a little bit extra revenue, but we still have that cross where they're not, we're still not getting enough per student to actually cover the cost. So, it can go either way.
And again, it would...
I don't think that it's a determining factor at this point.
Yeah. There's just so many other factors. What, what does inflation look like? Is that gonna change? Is, um, what are we gonna agree to for salary adjustments? What is our healthcare plans gonna look like? So, there's just a lot of different factors that, again, we've made assumptions on that we'll just have to keep monitoring to make sure that we're being flexible enough to be able to change things as we need to.
And then in just, in, in closing for us, Chair Franz and Board Directors, that, you know, again, between now and next week, um, you know, we're, we're in this holding pattern with what we've built into our assumptions of the types of, uh, reductions that we may need to engage in both the immediate as well as in longer term. In our ask is that on, on this specific aspect around kicking off a successful registration, if you have questions or you have other perspectives on that, that's what we would be asking you to reach out to me, reach out to Tammy or any of us, um, you know, the senior leadership team, and we'll address any questions, excuse me, questions that you might have. But at this point, we are, we are in this holding space, pending then the directional, guidance that you would provide, you know, next week. And if this is the, the direction that you would continue to support for us to move into registration, to make these adjustments, then that's simply what we're gonna be asking you all next week when we come together. Again, it's not a vote, because we don't vote on the budget, but it is a, yes, based upon the questions that we had or some of the clarif- clarity that we gained, yep, Michael, go forth and, and do this. Or, you know what, Michael, don't go forth with this, but go forth with that. That's what we're gonna be looking for specifically on this aspect, not the...
Specifically this slide?
Yeah, the, the staffing model changes and the details that we talked about aligned to that and unpacking with the electives, et cetera, at the middle school and, and things of that nature. But the others, we've got some time to engage in and really explore. Excuse me. And, you know, other, uh, changes.
So, just to clarify, if, if the board comes back, says, this, I mean, I don't think we have a choice. This slide is gonna be what it is. At the study session, will we have more information about the trickle-down effect of, that you started to go down, Dr. Edwards, of, of the impacts of this? Or are we gonna be just coming in and saying we're good with this after we ask our questions during the week?
I'm not sure...
Trying to understand...
Yeah, I'm not sure what the additional information would be needed. And I think that maybe is what the intent, the built-in time is to gather that feedback from you all, what additional details you might need to, to come to a conclusion on this particular slide. Not knowing right now what that would be, I think, between now and then, we'd wanna know that so we can come ready to the table for that.
And, and Chair Franz, in all fairness, this is a, a board decision, and there are boards in the state who have pushed back and said, we're not making any teacher cuts. So, I mean, I understand this is what they're proposing, but we are also the board that has to live with these decisions, especially the board members who will be serving for the next two years. So, I just wanna put it out there. One of the largest school districts in the state pushed back and said, no teacher cuts.
Well, all I'm saying is what additional information will we get? I appreciate that input, but that's kind of obvious. What, um, you know, if, I guess what I'm saying is, is if, if the board, um, and we're not voting on it, like we said, we're just giving a direction to make sure that we can plan for registration. Are we going to get additional information about any of this, any of this here? Or is the additional information, like you stated, going to come from the questions we ask in the next nine days?
Yeah, I think it would be, because a lot of this is driven by, as we've discussed earlier tonight, the actual registration once it occurs. So, the actual specifics of the impact of where, for example, those eight FTE would come at the high school. On that concrete example, I'll just share that we are anticipating 70 fewer students. We are graduating our largest class. So, that factored into this decision that that particular number is higher, considerably higher than the number at the middle school level. And again, the, the, the flexibility is greater at the high school level. So, but the specificity won't come until we come forward, um, with updates in the February timeframe, once registration is complete. So, what we would be providing you next week would be based upon additional information, questions that you have related to this particular slide.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted clarification, but thanks.
Chair Franz, if I may, I have one request, since it was brought up during this discussion. I would appreciate, uh, whether it's yet during this meeting or in an email to the board or, uh, maybe for the next study session, the administrative salary number, please.
Administrative salary number...
Are you referring to the number that I quoted for DSC employees?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I can share that with you. I mean, you, I can share with everybody, actually.
Yeah, I would like it from the administration, please.
It was something we actually received. It's not something I got from anybody. It was something we received, White, and I started on the board. It may have been our very first meeting for training. But, yeah, I can scan this and send it to everybody.
I think the, the question was, is having, getting it from administration.
Well, I can send it to them, because I got it from them. It's not something I made up.
I think they have the numbers, but thanks.
Yeah, but I did not make it up. I got it from adminis- I got it from the district.
We, we would like the numbers validated and coming from administration.
So, let me just be clarified. This is called Fall '24 DSC Staffing. And I literally received it from some, from somewhere, I don't recall, because I should have dated it. And it has the total number of FTE for Fall '24, and it has the salary and the benefits listed on it. And it has all the positions actually broken down by category, business office, human resources, technology, they're all, they're all broken down, all the positions. It's a great document to look at.
Feel free to send it. I would appreciate it from administration as well.
Yeah.
Members of the board, it's my understanding that that needs to be updated anyways with the most recent numbers. So, um, Director Atkinson, if you don't mind scanning that, um, we can work as a team between Director Rogers and I to, to see what we can get to the board.
Is this the will of the board that we get this information before the study?
We don't need it within nine days if that's not one of the topics we're supposed to be talking about next Wednesday. You know, I'm still, again, I'll, I'll hold, I'm, I'm assuming there'll be more questions on this, but fundamentally, it's not, we're not gonna sit around and decide we're actually cutting. I mean, thumbs up, thumbs, it's, you know, I'm, I'm looking. It's board direction to continue with the registration and...
Correct.
Maybe like Director Cosby said, well, then either delay it, which is not fair to our current staff, or let it go out the way it is and let parents get a better understanding of the difficulties of budgeting and what happens in public education when we are underfunded.
And I, my intent was because it was, it was going to be posted. You know, you, you wanted to post it. So, I just wanted to make sure before it was posted, we had the correct numbers. That's all. It, it doesn't have anything to do with our topic on next week. Thank you. I should clarify, yeah.
It does feel to me that that's exactly what we're doing next week, is giving direction to proceed with the enrollment, is what it feels like to me.
That is what we're doing.
Yeah, exactly.
And, yeah, I guess I don't know what amount of information is going to change.
Is it necessary for us to have that meeting? I mean, I, I don't know.
That's what I'm kind of getting at.
You know what I mean, like?
Yeah. I don't know what amount of information is gonna change the staff moving in this direction. Because we know it's such a large sum of money that we have to, you know, we have to get real and consider the realities. And then I hear Dr. Edwards talk about, you know, compared to our peers, we offer a lot more middle school offerings, so that makes no sense, given our local levy dollars. You know, we can offer more when we have more money to offer more. So, we're doing more with less than our peers. That's interesting to me. Okay, that's great, but not sustainable. Back to the fundamental shift. So, I don't need more information. It pains me. I don't like it. It's horrible. But I, it's, I don't need more information. I mean, that's something that just has to happen. And I, and I think administration will work very, very hard to make those numbers make the absolute most sense. Because of course, I mean, their life's work is educating children. Period.
Well, then the question is, do we need another meeting? Is that the question?
I would question that, I mean...
Are we able to just give direction on just this? And as of tonight? I mean...
Where I'm kind of coming back to.
It feels like that's where we're at, but I don't wanna speak, I, I don't wanna speak on behalf of everyone else. It feels like that's where we're at.
I would agree. And until we go through that enrollment process, that's gonna, the more data we have coming out of there, the more we're gonna know as a board on how to move forward.
My only concern is, is that, um, this is the first time we're giving these numbers to the public. And do they, you know, should we get feedback from them? Should we get feedback from staff? Should we, you know, do any of that? And, and again, the questions that I have with the hidden costs, they're gonna happen no matter what. But do we wanna leave it with these numbers? If the numbers change or if addition, if people have additional questions that change this particular decision? And if you, if everyone feels confident that this will stand no matter what, then I would agree. But do we wanna give, as we stated to the public, that we are gonna let them digest these slides also and send their questions in? That's the only thing.
I heard Dr. Thomas give solid confidence in these numbers. And so, I'm here to listen to administration and communities know this is coming. I, I hate to be that person, but it's not, but, but it's, it was very, very clear that this was a very real possibility. And they're gonna try to limit it to have the least amount of impact. But if Dr. Thomas is confident in these numbers and much of the information that Dr. Edwards provided tonight was very informational for us to understand the role, the enrollment process and, um, registration and why this is so important to look at it today. I just think I'm confident letting him go ahead with it now. But if you're gonna worry that, I heard someone say numbers can change in months, but I don't...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, members of the board, um, from personal experience, I know that obviously the democracy of this whole situation is extremely important. But when it comes to situations where something has to be done and a very, um, difficult decision has to be made regardless of what people think, what people want, it is almost best, mm, kind of to take less of, take in less of the opinions of the public, because regardless, when you release this information, you're giving the public nine days to convince one, two, maybe half of you to not go with this decision. And then it's almost goes into a useless direction of, okay, where are we gonna get the money? And then there's no other direction to go. And so, either way, people are just gonna be more upset with the fact that they're gonna have to make this decision or go into a more, um, more negatively impacting decision, which if this is something where it just seems to have the best outcome, the best area, and a lot of people are already confident about it, it almost seems a little safer where, since the public knows of this possibility, not giving them nine days to fight the confidence that most of you have, it's, seems like a more, um, it seems like a solution that makes more sense. it seems like a more, it seems like a solution that makes more sense in a way.
I appreciate that coming from you. Thank you so much. And I would agree. I hear what you're saying, Chair Franz. And also, I would agree that prolonging, we will hear many things. However, this is the recommendation from our senior leadership, our staff who are in it. And I have a confidence in that. This is something that we are faced with. And myself, speaking for myself, I feel confident to offer my direction on this tonight.
I have no problem moving forward. This is the decisions that we were hired to make. And they're going to be difficult no matter whatever, whether it's tonight or in nine days. People will agree with us or disagree with us tonight or in nine days. I don't think.
I agree.
And I agree because I think the enrollment process will help us better understand what we're really dealing with from a, from a picture, from a standpoint.
Director Olesstad?
I'm fine. I'm a digester. And so I always appreciate more time, but it's a question of, am I going to lose more sleep over the nine days than I already have already?
Solid point.
As I'm sure I can, I think I could safely speak for all of you in that sentiment. So if that's the will of the board, I'm comfortable with that.
And I want to clarify with administration, with Dr. Thomas, that the only decision that we would be making and direction, not decision or vote, but direction that we would be given is basically on this slide.
In the context that we've Yes, in the context that we provided around this. We don't stand to change anything in nine days. We were just going to stand ready to answer any questions or reflections that you might have. And even if the will of the board is to move tonight with that directional guidance to say, go forth and build this out in terms of prepping for registration, we'll still do that. And if you have questions, we stand ready to ask, you know, answer those as we go through this iterative process.
The only thing that I ask is in the meantime, that people abide by the policies, the operating norms and the ethics of the board, and that information comes from administration, not from us. So if you have a thing to post, it actually comes from administration. Therefore, there is no confusion, there is no misstatements, and the data is up to date, and the administration can defend it. That's what I ask, and that is part of our policy and our operating norms as well as in our ethics. Okay, so I hear that the will of the board is we are not going to have a study session on the eighteenth? Okay.
Yes.
Is that, okay. So we'll move on. And we've given the thumbs up or direction unanimously. Okay. All right. So next on the agenda is the organizational meeting discussion. So we're still working with Martha on the committees. And then I did receive information on the new board members and how to contact them because I didn't realize I didn't have emails yet for the district. So that will be occurring. And then our organizational meeting will be on, what is our first date?
January thirteenth, I believe.
January thirteenth, okay. And I'm not quite sure what other information needs to go on because the new board members have not had their orientation.
They're working on it right now?
Well, I understand that, but they have not had it. It's later this week. So yeah, so the organizational meeting is the start of the first board meeting of every new year. And that is where we decide on committees, on positions, and we make general voting decisions on, on our, everything from our auditor to roles and delegation of those roles to different administrators. So I'm not sure if there's anything else that needs to be said on that. Next is the MSBA Leadership Conference Registration. All board members are registered automatically. It's included with our MSBA membership. And that will be on Thursday and Friday, January sixteenth and seventeenth. This happens every year. This year, it's again at the Minneapolis Convention Center. And unlike previous years, the new board training will not happen at that time. That will happen before then, if I'm not mistaken, correct, Martha? For, for Phase One and Phase Two?
Yes, they'll have already been taken.
Correct, okay. Because in previous years, it would happen either the night before or the day before or something like that. And I think that's all we need to say about that. Is that also correct, Martha? Okay.
I have a question, actually. It pertains to Policy Two Oh Three. And our Policy Two Oh Three states that the board will schedule professional development for board members and data retreats for district planning and strategy at least twice annually. In addition, board members shall, or board members will attend a minimum of one MSBA conference per year. And in previous years, there are some board members who have not attended this conference. The question has been, come to me, is it mandatory to attend? But it does say per policy. Our policy says that in addition, board members will attend a minimum of one MSBA Association Conference per year. I just want to get clarification on that because it is in our policy. No, I understand it's optional from MSBA, but I'm saying pertaining to our policy.
We've always, I think people have attended more than one, actually.
Well, last year.
Just the January one or any MSBA?
Yeah, well, our policy says we have to, a minimum of one. And I think last January, I think Jess attended, I attended. You were there for a few minutes at the end. I don't think Chair Franz attended.
I was there.
I attended, yes.
I was there.
I just.
I was there with, with Dr. Thomas the whole first day.
I didn't see you, but anyway, I just want to get clarification because the question has come up. Is it mandatory? Because there, are there other MSBA conferences per year?
Yes, there's, yes, yeah. I've gone to others too.
Did someone one as well?
Yeah, and as you notice, I did send out, for so, for some of us that, that attended, because we had a limited budget this year, I sent out a reminder saying that, you know, this is your annual individual budget for the MSBA conferences just to make sure that some of the people that were signing up for more than one knew that this may be their limit based upon their individual allocation.
I'm clear, okay. So it's if someone has a work conflict or something and they can't make this one, the policy just states that there is a minimum of one they must attend. So just want to be clear on that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, going on to policy. There's no final, there's no policies due for a reading yet. And then moving on from there, there is administrative reports. So handing this off to the superintendent.
Chair Franz, I believe you missed a staff appreciation.
Oh, yeah. Oh.
Looking on the thing there, I apologize for that.
Let me go back to the online one, not the pre-written one. Oh, a proclamation, that's right. Okay, thank you. The Proclamation for School Safety and Security Appreciation. I would ask that Director Burnick read that one. You can't get.
I can't get mine to go up either. I don't know why, so.
School Safety and Security Staff Appreciation Week, January sixth through ten, twenty twenty five. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes January sixth through ten, twenty twenty five as School Safety and Security Staff Appreciation Week. Our school safety and security staff ensure the safety of more than eighty seven hundred Prior Lake Savage Area students and more than thirteen hundred employees. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day was celebrated on January ninth, twenty twenty five, where our school safety and security staff at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools includes two school resource officers from Savage and Prior Lake Police Departments, campus and lunchroom supervisors, a district emergency preparedness and response coordinator, and school building crisis response teams. Where our school safety and security staff help keep our Prior Lake Savage Area Schools building staff, student staff and community safe. Where our school safety and security staff aid students in developing positive behavioral skills, mentoring and counseling students and acting as mediators when disagreements arise. Where our school safety and security staff train staff and teachers to identify and handle emergence, emerging safety issues. Therefore, let it be resolved. The Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to school safety and security staff for ensuring a safe and welcoming environment to our students, staff and community and declares January sixth through ten, twenty twenty five, to be School Safety and Security Staff Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Mayor Franz, members of the board, thank you very much for this recognition. Honestly, I think of one of the programs that I know for sure is a success is the, having the SROs in the building and the health and safety side of that that they help us with. Haley, my health and safety coordinator, has been working exceptionally hard on our lockdown drills, on our fire drills, making sure that all the schools are prepared and ready to do what they can to protect all of those people in those buildings. And the coordination and the cooperation that we've had with the local police departments and fire departments as they've come into these buildings and helped us with these drills has been absolutely amazing. And the learning experience that everyone has gotten, being able to come into the buildings and actually do these drills and in an effective way that they're, the kids are learning from it. They're not being afraid by the situation. I think that in itself is an amazing thing. I heard they had a lockdown drill at a local school during lunch, and it was chaotic. I'm hoping that the training that we're doing with that amazing staff, those SRO staffs and Haley on board, I think the training we're doing will make it so that we will have a much better reaction than that. So thank you for this. I will talk with Haley and let her know, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on now to administrative reports, and I hand this off to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Franz, Chair Franz and Board of Directors. Just a couple of quick things. Last Monday, elementary principals held their parent information centers for all of our incoming kindergarten students. So there are a lot of excitement and buzz in the air. Highly attended by many in our community, so very excited and hoping that that will also generate new kindergarteners because that's where we're seeing a lot of growth this year. So that'd be great to have that trend continue. We have our online enrollment opening up this Thursday. So a reminder to all of our families who are looking, that will open up for you. And then as a way to celebrate our incoming kindergarteners, on January sixth, those families who register, new families who register, they will be joining me in a Facebook Live Storytime. And there will be possibly some other things that might happen that, throughout that process as well. But just a way to really help welcome our kindergarteners. And so I'll be doing a fireside story reading with our, with our incoming kindergarteners. Just also want to reiterate the fact we, we recognize a couple of our school board members this evening who have served for some years and are now going to be looking at what they want to do with all this excess time. But again, thank you, Director Burnick, Crosby and Director Velasquez. I really appreciate all three of you. Reminder to our community, our annual MLK Junior Celebration on January twentieth, ten to noon at Prior Lake High School. And welcome folks to come out for that. And activities will include student presentations, recognizing our I Have a Dream poetry winners and guided table discussions and lunch. And then lastly, in that spirit of giving our tree of, our annual tree of warmth with our Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce, we've done a clothing drive for years. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who donated winter clothing. And all that winter clothing is being distributed to students throughout our district who are in need during this cold season. So that's all I have.
Great, administrative reports.
I have the very proud pleasure of providing you with the Hot Off the Press Budget Book that we have put together. We've actually submitted this to the International Association of School Business Officials to apply for their meritorious budget award. Last year, there were only three Minnesota districts that received this award. So we have submitted our proposal. There is actually a six-page criteria of what you need to do to submit this report. I would like to give kudos to our controller, Andrea Bradford. She put together all of the charts. The words in the document are mine. And then, of course, our Director of Communication, Kristi Messman, made it look really pretty. So I'm proud to present this to you. It is online under the business office website for our community to review. But here it is. Thank you.
This is really great, thank you.
This is fantastic.
Very impressive.
You're a published author. Wow. I don't know if anyone will read your book, though.
I'm gonna read it. I love it. I don't like my picture, but.
Review process, acknowledge they've received it. Depending on how many reports or documents they get, they say it'll take between three and six months for us to be notified whether we're going to receive the award or not. But again, there's only three that got it last year in Minneapolis. And this is an international, there's Canadian school boards. There's actually two school boards in Australia that have received it. So we're very excited. We're hoping that we've met all the criteria and we'll see what happens. We'll keep you informed when we find out.
This is fantastic.
It's wonderful. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you to your team. Thank you to Andrea. It's incredible.
It's wonderful.
Yes.
And it's, this is a reflection of our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four audit through June. Does this include, okay, it's through June. Okay, that's what I thought. This is fantastic.
I was wondering what those stacks were over there. I'm like, wow, you guys are really prepared. Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other administrative reports?
Don't worry.
Okay. All right. And I'm going to skip and go to on first before we go to board reports. Is that okay? Or me? Alex, sorry, Alex. I'm thinking.
I'm Anne's replacement today.
Yes, and we met you at the, at the, at the.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so I'm going to keep this short and sweet, too. So obviously, the winter sports are now all fully started up. The boys just started, the boys swim team just started last week. So now I believe all the sports are going. The Native American Student Coalition's caring and committed conversation, I heard, went very, very well. They had some, a little bit of critiques for what they, we can do better for our other caring and committed conversations throughout the rest of the year. But overall, it was very well run and people really enjoyed it. And then obviously, Theaters Musical was amazing. People loved it, and they are going on to get recognized higher up in their theater tracks. And then moving on for, to more student council specific things, we did have our Coffee House Retreat and got more plans done for the rest of winter. We got all our winter committees set in. And then currently for the specifics with standing committees for student council, special events just finished up their nose shave event. It was very successful. And then development is continuing to work on the staff wall and other projects around the school. We have a little bit of a stolen problem with something with the staff wall. We're still figuring that out. And other club development, the fundraising committee just had, we just had, they just had their secret holiday shop last weekend. It was very cute. A whole bunch of kids really enjoyed it, us being there, help them out. And then this weekend, we have Sonia's Hope for Children. And then the Sunshine Committee obviously is doing a lot of things around the school that are putting smiles on people's faces, including continuing to give out birthday donuts every Friday. Concessions are starting up their basketball concessions. Right now, I think NHS is taking care of the first few, but then student council is going to move on and take the reins for that. And then communications is continuing, is actually helping development with helping giving advertisement to clubs through our social media platforms. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
Sounds like a lot. Can I ask about the birthday donuts? Who, who, tell me more about the birthday donuts every Friday.
Oh, so this is some, this is actually a thing we've been doing for the past, well, at least as long as I've been on student council. But it's in charge of the Sunshine Committee, the committee really just, who is in charge of making sure smiles are on people's faces and kind of just the person. smiles are on people's faces and kind of just the personality for hire that keeps everybody happy. And one of their big things is handing out donuts every Friday for people whose birthday is that Friday. It is a little bit of an embarrassing thing for a person whose birthday is it, but they get a little donut and it's kind of just a lighthearted thing that, um, a lot of people really enjoy, so.
Love it. Any other, uh, board reports?
Um, I have a few things, um, I'm going to talk really slow because it's your last meeting, so I'm just going to draw this out. No, uh, two things. Southwest Metro, um, so, uh, they are in their needs assessment phase, um, which, with the new superintendent, um, and he is going through each department and just, well, as the name implies, assessing, um, each department. Um, this particular week, he's doing a lot of site visits, so, um, really excited to hear next week at our board meeting, uh, what, uh, is becoming of those and how that went. Uh, Southwest, Southwest Metro just got a clean audit, which is good news. Um, there's going to be a possible board retreat in February, so we're just nailing down that date, um, if, um, you know, I'm part of that. Um, they have a new Executive Director of Business Services, so a new, uh, teammate on their exec board. Um, and then, uh, really good piece of news that I found out today, the inclusive culinary arts class, uh, was chosen to be part of the school excellence showcase at the MSBA Conference in January. So, um, they'll be set up all day cooking yummy food, so excited to go see that. And so I hope you can all, uh, go to that. And then this past Saturday, I had delegate assembly for Area 17, which we're in, um, and 23 of the 28 resolutions passed. Um, and so it went by pretty quick, um, no real, um, no real huge issues that took a lot of time. It was very different last year, this, this year seemed to speed up quite a bit. Um, but it's a good flag, advocacy starts now, um, as Dr. Thomas said before, uh, earlier in the meeting. So advocacy starts now on behalf of our district, so, um, if anybody's interested in the giant book or what passed and what didn't pass, happy to pass it along, but, or I can go through every single one if you'd like.
Director Olson, I actually have a question, I heard that there's some positive momentum, um, around the K through three, exclusionary discipline, that there was some, some legs behind that from everybody coming together, from the MSBA taking a stand on that.
That was one of them, yes. Uh, that was actually the last resolution that we did that day, um, it did pass.
That's awesome.
That was a division vote, which basically meaning we had to use our paddles, um, because the voice vote wasn't clear.
Yeah.
Um, we had to do a couple of those. Um, so basically what that says is that the MSBA urges the legislature to rescind the K through three exclusive discipline law and allow for dismissals and suspensions of K through three students in certain cases. Um, it did get a lot of discussion, um, it did pass, not by a huge margin, I can't remember the number. But that did pass, so that'll be interesting to watch.
Mm-hmm, yeah, thank you for elaborating on that.
Is the MSBA going to publish the resolutions?
They will.
Yeah, okay.
I have them too, um, it's three pages or whatever, I'm happy to make copies if anybody wants them, but, and I marked down what passed, what failed, but yes, they will.
Okay, because they usually put that on there with the full description, the adjoining statute, all that, okay, good.
Yeah.
Um, not sure how quickly they're going to get to that considering it's the holidays, but-
I don't know, and I didn't check today, I should have before I came to the meeting and didn't, but, um, yeah, they will.
Okay, all right. Um, anything? You guys want to say anything?
Speech, speech, I was going to make the motion adjourn.
Which you can do. You absolutely can do that.
I know you guys want to go home.
I'll say something.
Okay, you say something.
I always say too much anyways, but I have to, it's my last hurrah. Okay, I just want to thank you all and honor to serve, total honor and privilege to serve, sometimes more than others, of course, but I want to go around and do a little shout-out because I'm about relationships and you guys know this. And Lisa, thank you for serving in your capacity. And, um, one thing I'll, that I admire about you is your constant inquisitiveness and your questions because I think curiosity is so important. And so, that's something I, I think you bring to the, to our table that is so needed. And Dan, thanks for stepping up, our board needs leaders like you who have that kind of history and scope of understanding of what the board work is, and they're really going to need it as we move forward too. We always need that, so thanks for stepping up. Um, Mary, thanks for everything, we've had a lot of, a lot of conversations. What, one thing I'll say, which other people probably won't appreciate, but will understand, is that I think you and I can say just about anything to each other, which is unique in a relationship. Amy, you've restored my faith in humanity.
Oh, God.
I'm not crying, I'm not crying, but I'm not crying. And you, thanks for walking this walk with me, I wouldn't have made it. Thanks for always having the lens to look at kids, you know, it's always the kid's lens, every time. We could be talking about, I mean, the furthest thing away and you'll bring it back. And most importantly, the leaders, you guys. That's where I'm going to lose it, so, that's all I got. You're amazing, you're, the way you work together, I have so much respect for it. And our community needs to know how lucky they are, I hope they know. Last, best for last, Martha. Yeah, thank you, you are, you are the glue, you're tremendous, thanks. So, uh, it was an honor and a privilege.
Thanks, thanks. So I'm going to echo everything she said because sometimes we do share a brain, so I agree with everything she said. I would like to thank every community member that has come up and spoken to us. Like, I know for a fact, sitting here, that you can see them nervous, and like, that's what makes this community so great, is that people are invested in their kids and their education and each other. So, yeah, that's what kind of keeps you going because that's why we're here, so, step up and listen and join in. Everyone deserves a cha, chance up here, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you both.
Um, that's hard to follow, but, uh, the couple of things that I want, the couple of things that I wanted to mention was just, um, American Education Week was wonderful last year, I didn't get to, uh, engage in it, I broke my wrist and I had surgery that week, so, uh, it was so fun going into all of the buildings. And looking at our strategic plan, the positive learning environments, we have them, every single building. It was so positive, it was so fun, um, the engagement with the staff and the students. And so, with all of the hard things that we are encountering, with the budget cuts and all of the things that society, culture, all the things, all the hard things that we face, I just want us to, um, remember that what we focus on grows, and we have so many wonderful things in our buildings. And it was made really apparent to me on American Education Week, so that was great. And then, um, Little Shop of Horrors.
So good.
So good, okay, and that was it.
Dan?
And thank you to again.
Judge Atkinson? Um, yeah, I, I just quickly, the Teaching and Learning Committee, we had a CPM update, was, which was really wonderful. Um, they spoke very candidly about things that are working and some of the challenges that they face. The good news, there was a lot of positive that came out of there, and we will be receiving, um, an update, I believe, in January for wi, winter fast bridge scores, um, if I recall. Oh, February, okay, maybe we'll get them in January at the other, at the curriculum meeting, um, or the Teaching and Learning Committee. And then, um, also attended one school, and the middle school for the American Education Week. Unfortunately, I had to head out of town, um, for the rest of the week, but, um, I would say I was super impressed with, um, the engagement of the students in the building. And you can see that that cell phone policy that we passed is having a really positive impact on the learning environment. So, felt really proud of the work that we've done here at the table and making those hard decisions and seeing it really tie back to our strategic plan, so.
Um, I have no committee updates, I think we have a policy committee coming up this week on Thursday morning. Um, and, uh, American Education Week, uh, as usual, was just phenomenal. Um, I have varied where I spent my time, one time it was at the middle and high school, next time it was at, um, specialty areas, and this time it was exclusively at the elementary schools. And it was phenomenal, um, can't say enough about our leaders, our principals, the engagement with the students was fantastic. Uh, watching the kids in the media center in math and English and, um, preparing and, uh, training for a math test. And more importantly, is I got to sit in and see kids learn cursive writing, which I adore because that means those kids can read my writing then. Better than I can, probably. Um, but that was really impressive and their practice and the engagement from the teachers was just truly amazing and the work that they do, um, and how everyone, and everyone in that building, uh, you know, when, when there's an issue with the class or, again, students puking somewhere in the building, everyone comes together, everyone, and nobody is, is bored, that's for sure. And they all seem to love their jobs, so I appreciate the hospitality and, and all that. And with that, I think we're good, and, yeah, Director Burnick, would you?
I'd like to make the motion adjourn. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0, this meeting is adjourned.